We need the approval of the special meeting agenda, Member Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the agenda for the special meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benars to move the approval of the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now we need approval of additions and deletions. Oh, excuse me. I'm on the wrong page. All right, now we have time for public comment. I don't see anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that did want to comment at this point? All right, seeing none, we'll move ahead for the consent calendar. Member Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Benars, to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no other business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency. This meeting is now closed. All right, I'll now call to order the special meeting of the Salem City Council for November 4th, 2013. Would the recorder please call the role?
Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
President.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Clausen.
Here.
Counselor Dickie.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benars.
Yo.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. And we need approval of this special meeting agenda. Member Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the agenda for this special meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we also need approval of additions and deletions. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions, deletions, and revisions.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now have time for council and city manager comment. We're adding an item actually, or a procedure, that I'm very pleased to be able to begin, and that is to invite our city manager, Lynda Norris, to add any comments or share any information that she would like to. I'd like to start with you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to talk about downtown parking enforcement for a few minutes. Information has been circulating to downtown businesses that this city discontinued downtown parking enforcement, and I wanted to assure you and people in the community that we have not paused in our efforts. We continue to enforce parking regulations downtown. So, so far, since October 15th, we've issued 134 parking citations. Sixty were to downtown employees who were parking in prohibited spaces, and 75 were to people who parked longer than 30 minutes in a 30-minute space. Other miscellaneous violations have also received citations during that time. The two-hour signs were removed to our parking signs, and I wrote a letter to downtown businesses outlining the changes to downtown parking and asking them to provide us with employee-vehicle information by November 15th of this year so that we have a better way to enforce violations by downtown employees. So, we've been asked a few questions. One, do we need to put up signs, new signs, in order to issue citations? And no, we do not. The first thing we're doing, if people have a violation, is to give them a warning notice. And the warning notice has a map of what the downtown district is and explains what the ordinance requirements are, and that's all we need in order to be able to give citations. Are downtown residents prohibited from parking on downtown streets? And no, they are not. That's not a part of the ordinance. Is there a penalty if businesses don't provide employee-vehicle information? No, there's not. Staff is reviewing issues related to the ordinance, and we'll make a recommendation on this aspect of the parking regulations as soon as we work out some issues related to that. But I want to assure you and members of the downtown and other people that we are continuing our enforcement. We are working as hard as we can within our existing resources to make this a successful ordinance change. We hope that it will be successful. As I've said all along, though, in order to do this, we need the cooperation from downtown businesses and from employees working in the downtown, from jurors, from state and county employees. So, we're hoping to achieve that cooperation and hope that this will be a success. At your place, we have some frequently asked questions. A sheet that'll be on our website tomorrow, and we'll also send it to councilors electronically. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Counselors, are there any comments? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think all members of council received an email from Housing Authority in regards to the Thanksgiving Day, a week early on, the 21st of November, inviting you to help out by serving or actually just eating and spending some time with the residents of Inglewood, Western Inglewood. We encourage people to do that. Ben and my wife and myself have done that for several years. We missed the last year, maybe the last two. So, we'll be there. Always a lot of fun. I don't know if they're still doing the best apron contest, but a lot of good folks, a lot of good food.
And where do they come to do that?
Inglewood.
And where is that?
Off of Park and Center.
Okay.
D.
All right. I know you know the way there by heart.
It's in your email.
So, all right, it's in the email. Good.
I find it. I just track the park and...
Okay. Excellent. Great idea.
Parking is interesting, so don't park in the wrong space there.
Thanks for the warning. Other councilors? Comments? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on with our agenda. We have proclamations this evening. We have two proclamations. We're going to start with a proclamation for Veterans Day, and Counselor Dan Clem is going to present this proclamation. We have a very special guest here tonight to honor. Dan, do you want this one?
Sure.
Turn it on.
Thank you. Is it on now? Can you hear me?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council, members of the public. This coming Monday is a very special day for not only our city, our state, but our country and for the world. It's Veterans Day. No other country in the world has a Veterans Day because they don't have citizens who are willing to step forward, that helped make this nation, but in fact helped keep it free. The reason that we can have a city government is simply because men and women have been willing to step forward for centuries now, two and a half. And a lot of folks think about veterans as older gentlemen that served in World War II, and certainly we have a number of those. They are getting fewer every day. But we have veterans of every conflict still alive, even from World War I right now. So, almost 100 years of veterans that are still serving. If they're not wearing a uniform, they still are honoring the flag and standing up for people's rights that are so important to us. With that, I'd like to go ahead and bring forward a new friend of mine, but a very familiar uniform to me, the U.S. Army Sergeant Major Glassman. Would you please step forward? Thanks for coming, Sergeant Major. Sergeant Major's going to receive the proclamation, and then we have a few words to go over. Whereas each year on November 11th, we pause to remember the men and women who throughout history have served bravely and selflessly in America's armed forces, preserving our strength and security as a nation. And whereas on Veterans Day, we publicly commemorate the honorable legacy and sacrifices of our veterans, those lost to humankind and those who are thankfully with us today. Whereas America has been blessed with an abundance of such men and women throughout its history who proudly and bravely battled tyranny and oppression in World Wars I, II, Korea, Vietnam, and the Middle East. And whereas on this Veterans Day, we salute their courage and dedication to the defense of our democracy and the sovereignty of freedom-loving nations around the world. And whereas the nation, this nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contribution of American veterans, men and women, into the advancement of the cause of honorable world peace. Now therefore, I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby call upon all citizens to observe November 11th, 2013 as Veterans Day, and ask that the day be observed with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served and are serving to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Dated this fourth day of November, 2013, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sergeant Major. Sergeant Major Glassman, in front of you, is one of the top-ranking, non-commissioned officers in the Oregon Army National Guard. And as a matter of interest, it's a beautiful uniform, isn't it?
[laughing]
Each one of these badges and markings denote special service that he's had, but I want to draw your attention to a couple of them. The Combat Infantry Badge. He's been in combat with a rifle, facing hostile fire before. He's also got the Infantry Blue Court. And with that, it's great to have a fighter amongst us, Sergeant Major. Can you tell us a little bit about your deployments and service in the military?
Well, thank you, Councilman Clem, and Madam Mayor. I appreciate, and all council members and residents of Salem. We really appreciate this proclamation. It means a lot to all veterans. Your support is huge for us as veterans. You asked me about my deployments. I deployed twice, to a combat zone, once to Iraq, and we started in 2003, ended in 2005, and then came back, went to Katrina Rita and helped the residents of Louisiana. And then I went over to Mongolia for a couple of years, participating in a program called GPOIDS, which is Global Peace Operations Initiative, which helps train UN advisors for UN missions. And then in 2008, I deployed again to Afghanistan on a small team and into the Helmand Province, a fun province to be in.
Thank you for your service, Sergeant Major.
Is this on? As I did say earlier, we have two proclamations, and I have two guests this evening. If you'd like to come down to the other side, and I'll be able to present this proclamation to you. Welcome. Welcome. It truly is my pleasure and honor to be able to introduce to you two members, two leaders of INDAS, the India-U.S. Friendship Association, here in Salem. And they are Jayya Shri Shrinazasen.
Shrinazasen.
Thank you. And Dr. John Chappala. And I'm going to present this proclamation and read it. And then Counselor Laura Tesler is actually going to attend the celebration of Diwali and present this formally to your organization and your guests the night of the event. Whereas Diwali is a festival of great significance and celebrated annually by Hindus, Sikhs, and Jans throughout India, the United States, and the world. Whereas Diwali is a festival of lights that marks the beginning of the Hindu New Year, during which families light and place small lamps around the home and pray for health, knowledge, peace, wealth, and prosperity in the new year. Whereas the lights symbolize the light of knowledge within the individual that overwhelms the darkness of ignorance, empowering every celebrant to do good deeds and show love and compassion to others. Whereas Diwali falls on the last day of the last month of the lunar calendar and is celebrated as a day of Thanksgiving for the homecoming of the Lord Rama and worship of Lord Ganesh, the remover of obstacles and bestower of blessings at the beginning of the new year. And whereas for Sikhs, Diwali is celebrated as Bandai Chhor Divas, the celebration of freedom in honor of the release of Guru Hargobind from Mughal rulers. Now therefore, I, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby call upon all citizens to observe November 4th, 2013 as a celebration of Diwali, and ask that the day be recognized for the religious and historical significance of the festival of Diwali, the festival of lights, and expresses its respect for the Indian-Americans in Salem on this very special occasion. And it's my honor and pleasure to know that this proclamation will be presented to your organization and to your guests this coming Saturday evening. And I wondered if you would like to explain a little bit about the event and invite people to come, because it is open to the public. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. There you are.
I would like to thank Madam Mayor and the councilmen and the City of Salem residents. Diwali is one of the biggest celebrations for all the Hindu-Americans, so Hindus living all over the world. And as Madam Mayor read in the proclamation, it's welcoming the homecoming of Rama and also killing of the evil soul, you know, Ravana. He was a bad guy in our mythology. So, it basically symbolizes victory of good over evil. You know, that's what is basically proclaimed by all the religions. And it's a very fun celebration as well, a lot of food, a lot of cultural festivities, and, you know, beautiful lights and firecrackers. That's what we do back home, you know, in India. But here in Salem, there is an association called INDAS, and we have our Diwali celebration coming Saturday. That is 7th? Oh, sorry, 9th. And we would like to welcome all of you. It's open to public. It's a family event. We would like to welcome all of you to attend the event, and you can basically look up on us at salemindus.org, and you will find information about the events. So, we would like to welcome everybody. We can promise good food and a lot of colorful dances, music, and all of that. So, yeah, please. Thank you.
If any of you wish to join us that evening, be prepared for a little spicy food. City of Salem is blessed with the diversity of many cultures, and we come forward from the Indian subcontinent and invite you all, any one of you, to join us and enjoy Bollywood dancing, spicy food.
Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you.
All right. We're now at that point in our agenda where we ask for public comment.
Do we have anyone signed up? No. Is there anyone in the audience that did want to appear and make comment at this point? Okay. And we'll move directly to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you please introduce the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the consent calendar. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We now move to public hearings. We have four public hearings this evening. Would the recorder please introduce the first public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding denial of vehicle-for-hire driver license for Ken Levesey. Criteria for review of the vehicle-for-hire license that issued are established in former Salem Revised Code Chapters 30 and 34, which were in effect at the time of the application.
All right. And we have a staff person. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff Starkey, Management Analyst II for the Building and Safety Division. The subject is the denial of vehicle-for-hire driver license. The issue, should the city council deny the vehicle-for-hire driver license application for Ken Levesey? Staff recommends the city council deny the vehicle-for-hire driver license application for Ken Levesey. Mr. Levesey, the applicant, applied for the license on August 27th. On September 19th, the interim Community Development Director denied the application based on recent criminal convictions. The same day, a certified letter was mailed out to the applicant explaining the denial and his right to appeal. October 7th, the city recorder received a letter from the applicant's attorney appealing the denial and requesting a hearing. On October 30th, supplementary documents were also submitted by Mr. Levesey's attorney. Approval of this license is subject to the provisions contained in former Salem Revised Code Chapter 30 concerning regulated businesses and vocations generally, and former, yes, former Salem Revised Code Chapter 34 concerning vehicles for higher licenses. It states the following shall be grounds for any license or renewal: past or present violations of law or ordinance, including a violation that does not lead to a conviction, which presents a reasonable doubt about the applicant's ability to perform the licensed activity without endangering public property or the public health and safety. I first became aware of the applicant's interest in making application, following up on a complaint. The complaint was that Mr. Levesey was operating a taxi company and driving a cab for that company without the proper city licenses. I phoned the number I was provided, and he answered Battle Creek Taxi Cab Company. I informed him of the complaint, and he confirmed that both allegations were true, that he was driving unlicensed, and he was also operating the taxi cab without the proper city license. He explained to me that he had been meaning to talk to me about it. He had questions about the background check. He said the idea to drive the taxi and start the business was his probation officer's. And in addition, he had a safety plan, which included a video camera that would be mounted in the cab of the vehicle. He provided me a brief history of the criminal background, saying he had drug charges because a passenger had left drugs in his cab that he was driving at the time, and sex charges were based on false allegations that were made to make his life difficult. He said this was, the business was a trial to find out if it would work, and he knows that he needed to make it right with the city. The background investigation that was performed disclosed that in 2011, there were two felony convictions for attempt to commit crime, sex abuse in the first degree. There was also a misdemeanor conviction for a controlled substance, and he's currently serving a five-year probation, ending August 8th in the year 2016. In 2012, he was convicted of failure to register as a sex offender. His attorney provided a letter in that supplementary documentation on October 30th that includes a Marion County letter dated in 2012. That letter includes a statement saying, "Based on an evaluation, Mr. Levesey is not likely to reoffend or violate the conditions of his release." However, when we contacted his probation officer, Wayne Francis, he explained that this is only a form letter used when clients are transferred from one caseload to another, and that all conditions of his probation still apply, except he does not have to physically report. The year 2013, the Marion County probation officer denied Mr. Levesey's claim that it was the county's recommendation to engage in the taxi business, and added they do not endorse or support it. The probation officer also said the safety plan is a standard precautionary procedure to inform clients of expectations they have when they're acting in the community. It's the staff opinion that the plan does not protect the public for the reasons given in our supplementary report you hopefully received late this afternoon. Mr. Levesey stated false allegations were the cause of the sex charges. Marion County disagreed with this statement, saying his actions were consistent with the charges he pled guilty to. Some details of the case may be found at the bottom of Page 2 of the city's supplementary staff report. Contrary to the facts of the drug arrest Mr. Levesey gave to me, the Salem Police Report states that he was not driving a taxi cab at the time of the drug arrest, and the drugs were found under his seat. He knowingly operated the taxi company without a license. According to the safety plan that he provided us, it states in there that he began the business around June 5th, 2013. He knowingly acted as a taxi driver without a license. Granting of a city license is a privilege, and anyone granting the license has a responsibility to comply with all applicable laws and ordinances. Mr. Levesey has demonstrated a pattern of behavior that presents a reasonable doubt about his ability to perform the licensed activity without endangering the public health and safety. The police department and I will remain available for questions. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we now proceed to both the, I see that both the applicant, or excuse me, both the individual and his attorney are here and have both signed up. You'll have a total of 15 minutes for your testimony, and it is entirely to the two of you to decide how you want to divide that 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. My name is Daniel Rice. I reside in Ward 4. I am the attorney representing Ken Levesey with respect to both appeals that are before you. We're addressing, I guess, the vehicle-for-hire appeal separately. The issues kind of blend together, so I'll speak to both of them, and to the extent that there's further comments on the next appeal, I'll address those as well. We need to sort of address the elephant in the room concerning the criminal convictions. Ken is not here to try to shirk those in any way. He acknowledges that he has been convicted of those, and we're not here to, you know, retry a case in front of the Salem City Council or anything like that. What he was... What he was actually convicted of pursuant to a plea agreement on the sex abuse charges related to isolated incidences back between 2003 and 2008 involving a relative, a single victim. And then the other charge was a possession charge, the one that he pleaded to, that he was convicted of pursuant to that plea agreement, was possessing pain pills without a prescription. He wasn't under the influence of the pain pills. They were in his personal vehicle. He didn't have a prescription for those. So that's the conduct at issue relating to the criminal issues. The other point that's been raised is the issue of whether, you know, the statement that "I have opened a taxi company" in the safety plan that was presented with the application, that statement is true in a sense, because the company was started, wasn't operating in Salem as a full-bore taxi company. It was organized through the state of Oregon. It was organized as an LLC. Ken was in the process of getting all the stuff that you need to get done to start a taxi company. You have to buy a cab, you have to get your insurance, you have to get the cab metered, you have to get the decals put on the car. All of that is involved in starting a taxi company. Now, the people who know Ken best personally and professionally are here. Ken has had a vehicle-for-hire license before in the city of Salem. He drove for Affordable Taxi. No incidents were reported. In fact, the people who he drove for can vouch for his character and the fact that he was well-regarded as a taxi cab driver. We received the supplemental report from Mr. Starkey just this evening at the hearing, and so I'll try to address the extent I can, some of the concerns that were raised there. It appears that there's a suggestion that he made up some false representations. We don't have any record of what was actually said. As far as I understand, Ken can attest to that his idea for starting a cab company was his own, based on his prior experience and what he likes to do. He enjoys driving a cab and interacting with people. It's true that, under the conditions of his probation, he is not allowed to have contact with minors. That's not a concern, because if he, if he doesn't want to have contact with minors, they're not typically patrons of a taxi service. If he has contact with minors, that is a violation of his probation, and he risks going to jail. So he's not out trying to be in touch with minors through operating or driving a taxi And then the other, the other issue I want to address real briefly, it kind of goes to the next appeal, but we're talking about both a driver's license and an agency license. Ken is not the only owner of Battle Creek Cab Company LLC. The other co-owner is here, can also vouch for Ken and why she's decided to become involved in this company. With that, I'll reserve time to answer any questions, but I want to turn it over to Mr. Levesey, so you can hear directly from him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Levesey, just so that you know, at the end of, I think, 13 minutes, then the amber light comes on, and then when your time is up, the red light.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the total of 13 minutes. Okay.
I would like to briefly address the issue of whether I had discussed doing this with my probation officer or not. This was a discussion I had had with my, I have a different probation officer now because I'm on limited supervision. My supervising probation officer had suggested that I obtain my driver's license and be available to transport people who needed to get to probation, to the probation office for, you know, the price of gas. I just took it to the next step, thinking that, well, if I'm going to drive people around, I should be able to drive people around for a living. So, you know, although she didn't specifically say to open a cab company, I did take it to, I took it to the next step, thinking that if she felt confident in me driving ex-felons around, then she would feel confident with me driving, you know, regular, normal people around, if you will. The probation officer who is listed in here is not the one who signed my safety plan or had these discussions with me. The probation officer that I had, her name was something, Polanski, and we had talked at length in regards to my ability to, you know, the safety plan that has become in question, that I have a camera installed in my cab, that passengers are only allowed in the rear seats of my van, and that, one of the additional safety plans was that I'm allowed to go into an establishment that serves alcohol with the, with two specific purposes, one of which was to pick up a customer, and the other one was to solicit business from the establishment. My probation prohibits me from alcoholic consumption, of which I have not had a drink in over two years. Okay. I did write down a brief statement that I'd like to share a quick. Of course, my name is Ken Levesey, and by no means am I proud of my convictions, but I'm in a position that I have to live up to that. Okay? And I have to face it straight on. If I could fly under the radar for the rest of my life and have nobody know, I would love that, but the fact is that I've been convicted of this, and I have to face up to it. I would like to own and drive my own cab company in the city of Salem. Despite my conviction, I am a man of integrity. Okay? Almost three years ago, I was accused of an act that supposedly happened about 10 years ago, and the other one about five. I pled guilty, as I had no way to defend myself. It was my word against that of my stepdaughter. He said, she said, situation. Okay? I'm standing before a group of strangers defending my integrity. My personal creed is that a man is only as good as his word, and if I give my word, it is my binding to you, or is more binding to me than anything written on a piece of paper would be. My safety plan has been put into question, and it was said that I could just simply turn the camera off. Well, the camera provides safety to me and to my customers, and it would prevent me from, would it prevent me from reoffending what you have to have offended in order to reoffend? The camera ensures that, aside from my company name and phone number written on both sides of the cab and rear of my vehicle, so if I was to do something stupid, I would be the most easily identified person out there. Since it's part of my, since I have a safety plan, since I have to have the camera on, if I was to be pulled over and they found that the camera was not on, it would be a violation of my probation, I would go to prison for that. So, a $10 trip would not be worth three or four years in prison to turn that camera off. Whether a customer asked me to, or whether I would decide to, being on probation, I am subject to stop and search at any time. A police officer does not need a reason to pull me over. I don't have to violate a traffic law. I just have to be there, and they just have to be aware of me. So I'm held to a higher accountability than probably anybody else in this room. Every six months, I go and have a polygraph exam, and I have to pass it. If I do not pass that polygraph exam, it is a violation of my probation, and I can go to prison. That means that I have to hold myself to a higher accountability than anybody else does. That means that I cannot, I cannot do the things that most people do. It would be a probation violation for me to even so much as watch a dirty movie, which everybody in this room has at least at one time in their life. I cannot. If I, if I'm found at the polygraph exam to lie about that thing, that one item, is probation violation, I could go to prison. My level of integrity has to remain at an all-time high, higher than most people's level of integrity. Integrity to me means that I won't do something in hiding that I won't do in front of other people. So I live my life at all times as though I am being watched. I'm not talking paranoia. I'm talking a high level of integrity and aware of the scrutiny that I am under. I really went off on a tangent there. Sorry about that. Like I said, I am under closer scrutiny than any other company out there with the regular polygraph exams, subject to searches. My home is subject to search, my vehicle is subject to search, my person is subject to search at any time. There's two officers here right now. If they were to choose to, they could take me out in the hallway and search my person. I cannot, I cannot oppose that. I feel that it makes me safer than any other driver out there, because any other driver has a right to refuse these things. I do not. There has to be no, there's, I'm, I'm very passionate about this. I love being a cab driver. I love helping people out. I give people the best deal that they can get out there. My rates are lower than anybody else. I pride myself on punctuality. You won't find, I can promise you, you will not find a cab company out there that will serve you quicker or better than me. My name is on this. My future hinges on this. I have a passion for what I do. I'm, I'm asking you to give me an opportunity to have a career in something that I love. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do any counselors have questions for other gentlemen at this point? Okay, we will proceed. Thank you very much. We'll proceed to the Neighborhood Association. If anyone is here from a Neighborhood Association that would like to testify in this public hearing, and if not, then I'll simply start going down the list. Paul Frederickson, followed by Aura Kraus. Welcome, and you will have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. Welcome.
Thank you.
And state your name and address, please.
My name is Paul Frederickson. I am the brother-in-law of Kenneth Levesey, and I wanted to speak in favor of his integrity that he has spoken out with you, but I've known him for 22 years. I was first introduced to him in 1991, when I was dating his sister, who is now my wife, and anyhow, we visited with him many, many times. He visited with us, and they were raising a young girl at that time, who now has two children, and he's a proud grandparent of two. He's also was very close to the family at the area where they lived, on the farm there, with nieces, nephews, and brothers and sisters. And later years, when his teen daughter and his wi, anyhow, sorry, when his daughter was in her teens, he and his wife, first wife, separated or got a divorce, and anyhow, he was remaining custody of his daughter. But also during this time, Ken was active in a church in Staton, and basically advanced to the point of associate pastor, where he counseled friends and members of families in the church. During this time, Ken's mother passed away. She'd been in a nursing home for some time, and anyhow, when she passed away, he moved in with his father, who had a small farm in the State and Romano area. But just a month short of a year, his father passed away, and this came as a pretty heavy impact on Ken's life, losing both his parents in less than a year's time. Anyhow, they run the farm for a few months until it was, the sole was part of the estate. And I'll move on. Okay, speaking about the point where he was arrested for, and charged with a stepchild with the sexual abuse, but Ken's been living with us. He's helped care for my wife and I, and their investment into this has been very, very substantial, $20,000. And as part of that, they were actually expanding to get to another company when this whole situation came up with ceasing to provide service to the community. But anyhow, I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thank you very much for coming down to testify. Do counselors have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Aura, is it Kraus? Oh, Kinzie?
My name is Aura Koozie, like a jacuzzi.
Oh, thank you.
I'm here to testify on behalf of Ken.
Oh, could you please give your address or your ward?
My name is Aura Koozie, 736 Balden Road in Camas Valley, Oregon.
Okay. Thank you.
A little ways from here. I've known Ken for approximately one year. I am a teacher's assistant. I coach youth and high school foray volleyball. I'm an OSAA official. I run a camp during the summer for kids that don't have, it's a not-for-profit camp for kids that come from homes where there have been drugs and abuse and that, and so that's where I come from. And so I've been around a lot of kids who have been in a lot of different situations, and being around Ken, he is not someone that I would have any problem with having around me and the children at any given time. He has great integrity. I have ridden with him a couple of times in the cab when he had calls outside of the city, because he has a license to operate outside of the city of Salem, and he was very professional in how he dealt with his customers. He, the customers were very comfortable with him. There was no uneasy feeling, there was no feeling that you would get from the charge. There's such a taboo on the charge of a sexual offender, and yet, if you look into the statistics of sexual offenders and people who have had to plead guilty to such, many of them have not committed the crime, but it is in their best interest, as they feel, to plead guilty to save, because the system is there. And then if you look at the system, the system that he's had to be a part of, he has followed everything he has been required to since he's been released on probation and being released on probation, the people that he interacts with have supported him. Now, a safety plan is not a necessary part of his everyday life, but he has to have a safety plan in place to do this, and to have both of the people that he sees, was seeing weekly and now is seen monthly, plus have a PO sign that plan, says to you, they trust him. And so at some point in time, we have to believe that the system works. And we also have to believe that sometimes the system has people in, and if you watch document, whatever, documents, we'll go with that, there are people that have been falsely accused, and yet, they've taken a plea so that they don't have to serve a sentence. And I just speak on his integrity. He is honest, he's trustworthy, and as I work with youth who, as a teacher's assistant, I work with youth who are in and out of the probation.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to tell you your time is up.
I've been here three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so anyways, I just would give him the second chance.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions by counselors? All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Jeannie Walker, followed by Lisa Hendrick. Jeannie Walker, followed by Lisa Hendrick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jeannie Walker. I live at 1408 Yolanda Avenue down in Springfield, Oregon. I'm here tonight to support Ken. He and I are partners in this company. I have invested close to $20,000 in this because in order to actually apply for the license, you have to have a vehicle and you have to prove that you have taxicab insurance, which is not easy to find. It runs in the area of $500 a month. So I have put my finances and my integrity on the line. I trust him immensely. I've known him for a little over a year. He was very honest with me about his past, right from the get-go. He has a vision, he is very professional. I've seen him work with other people. He has a vision of a taxicab service that is of the utmost in professionalism. Clean, courteous, on time, often early, and good rates and good company. So I would ask that you please reconsider licensing him for a taxicab license and for the company license. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from any councilors? All right, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Lisa Hendrick. My address is 6227 Arbordale Drive Southeast in Salem, and I'm a past owner of Affordable Taxi. Ken was a contracted driver for my company when I had owned it. I'm also a past owner of Salem Kaiser Taxi Dispatch and Answering Service, where I had employees who would dispatch Ken. I'm really surprised that I'm here before you. Ken is, has always held himself accountable to a higher level in the taxi business. He would always show up on time to rent his cab and made sure the cab was clean. He always appeared very hygienically clean himself, smelled good, looked good, and made sure that his taxi's oil was changed, that it was up to level, checked the tire pressure, would do a walk-around. When we had the big snowstorm about three years ago, I'm not aware if you all have received my letter, I hope you have, but he actually went out and purchased studded snow tires so that he could service his people in a timely manner during the snowstorm. He was specifically requested by the Red Lion to come and pick up people, actually to pick up the people who worked there at the Red Lion on Market Street, to deliver them to work because there was no other way for them to get there. Ken also has been an extremely safe driver, making sure that his cab is in top working condition. And I don't know if any of you have taken the time to travel in any of the cabs in Salem, just at spur of the moment, especially police officers. You'll find that some of the cabs in this town, because since then, I'm a master student at Oregon State University, majoring in Women, Gender, and Sexuality Studies, and I have had an opportunity to travel in some of the cabs that are currently around here. Drivers are not only uncleanly, the cabs are uncleanly as well, and several cabs are in disarray. Doors do not open, windows do not go down. Ken will never let his cab be in that kind of order. He is not likely to reoffend, I guarantee you. Ken is extremely responsible to the public. He has high integrity, he is responsible, and he is very reliable. If any of you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilors, are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much for coming down to testify this evening. All right, we now have the opportunity for questions of staff. So would our staff person please come back up? And are there any questions by any of the councilors? Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
I believe Counselor...
And then Counselor Tesler.
Tesler.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Starkey, page two in the background. I believe Mr. Levesey's attorney had indicated that your telephone discussion was just a phone discussion, that there was no way to verify the things that were said by Mr. Levesey or by you. That was the implication. Can you help me sort out in your initial contact with Mr. Levesey on August 19th, when you talked to him on the phone, that it sounds like the representation here is that Mr. Levesey said somebody else left the drugs in the cab and that the charges, sex charges, were based on false accusations. I am concerned that contact with the public means being able to accurately represent what you're saying, and so I'm just asking you to verify that he, in fact, had blamed somebody else for leaving the drugs in his cab and then had said that they were false accusations.
That is correct to both of those, and I documented the parts of that conversation the same day, immediately following that conversation. So at this point, I'm not relying on my memory to recall those things.
And that the taxi business, he did, in fact, state it was a probation officer's idea.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Since he had had experience in that, his probation officer thought that would be a good idea.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Starkey. I was just curious if part of this denial was based on the fact that you, the staff, felt that the conditions of his probation have been violated or could be violated? Because it seems like the probation officer suggested that he set up a business. Is this correct? Am I following this logic correctly?
Okay, can you restate it one more time?
Okay. Do you feel that the conditions of the probation would be violated or would be in danger of violated if Mr. Levesey was allowed to continue having a cab business?
We have a reasonable doubt that...
Based on?
Based on the criminal history, the violation of his probation, and his misstatements about the facts to us as we're working with him on it, on his operating the taxi and the business itself without the proper licenses. It was stated by his attorney that he was working on a startup during that time, June 5th. However, the complaint was that he was operating the business when I received the complaint on August 19th, and Mr. Levesey confirmed that, that he was operating and driving the cab.
So because of that, excuse me, if I want, so because of that statement, that gave you reason to believe that he was not, he is capable of not having, being able to have a cab company?
Yes, we have concerns about that if he's not following the rules, going back from where our background investigation started in 2011, in 2012, 2013. If there's a continued pattern of that, we have a reasonable doubt that he will discontinue that type of behavior.
And I just have one more question. I'm sorry, this is kind of like sub A, B, C. You know, how do you think that, you know, you could guarantee that this person would not have contact with minors? I mean, how could he guarantee that to you? Because as I understand, that is a condition of the probation, is that correct?
Yes.
Seems to hinge on that.
Yes, and I don't know how he could guarantee that. In fact, that would be a concern of ours, that we know in the city of Salem, taxi cabs are used to transport children to appointments and activities, and an appointment could be made by an adult to pick up a minor. He might not even know that until he gets there. And then if he doesn't pick up the minor, then that child or minor is left there without a ride, and how's that addressed? I don't, we have concerns about that, and we don't know how that would properly be
That's all for now, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, I have a question about the Attachment C, which is the, it says Event or Activity Safety Plan, which looks like is something that Mr. Levesey filled out. So I'm a little, can you help me understand what, so he wrote the details of, you know, different things in his background that happened, it's signed off by his PO. Is this a form from the city, or is this just something that was submitted, something that the city asked for? I'm confused about this.
And this was something that, my understanding is, that his probation officer at the time, and it also indicates his therapist signed off on, but he provided it to us, we did not request it. And the Salem Police Department contacted his current probation officer and got specific responses about that, and that it was not necessarily supporting or endorsing the activity, it was more or less a clarification to him of their expectations.
Is there anything you would add to that?
Okay.
All right, so this is just something, you wouldn't necessarily ask for this, it was submitted voluntarily, yes?
That's correct, yes.
Are there other questions? Counselor, Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Bennett? I'm sorry, did I get you mixed up? Counselor Bennett, or did you have your hand up first?
Yeah, no, Counselor Benars.
All right, Counselor Benars, and then Counselor Bennett.
Real quick question. On reference to the licensing, what does it take to get a license? What is the actual process? Is it involved from the city's point of view, from the time that he was not, did he not, he was operating but had not gotten his license through the city? What would it have taken?
The normal process, they fill out a application, which he did, they pay the proper fees, it goes through a background investigation, and in the case of a driver, they are granted a license to drive for a specific company that they've listed. In the case of the agency, if he has a vehicle, if he has no vehicles, it's not required, but at the time when he gets a vehicle, it were to be notified of that, he needs to have a proof of insurance on that vehicle.
So it's pretty much just a procedural kind of thing that he could have gone through, but the background check probably would have shown up if he had applied back in June, which is what I'm hearing when he started.
Yes, in fact, that's what he expressed to me was his concern.
Okay, thank you. And I had one follow-up question, if I may, with legal. And this had to do with, I'm trying to just understand, we have two hearings tonight, I'm not, don't want to go into four, yeah, 4B, but how do they relate? We have one with the individual, and we have one with the company?
Correct. In order to, if you're just a driver for a taxicab, you just need the vehicle for hire license for a driver. If you're operating the company, you need to apply separately as an operator. The criteria is essentially the same.
So in 4B, which we haven't gotten to yet, that's going to be, if he's allowed to operate a business then, separate from being a cab driver?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to understand the complaint that was filed. Was he driving, the way I understood the testimony, okay, was that Mr. Levesey is licensed to drive cabs outside the city of Salem, that he has some sort of Marion County license? Do I understand that, or?
That's what I heard tonight for the first time, and I can't confirm that.
Okay.
Or deny it.
But you would need one to drive outside the city of Salem. Would you need a license, or a shield, or whatever you get? I'm not sure.
I'm not familiar with the requirements of other jurisdictions, just the city of Salem is the only one I could comment on.
Okay. But the complaint was, he was driving, he was delivering passengers inside the city?
Yes.
Okay. Given whatever, say there were a negative action tonight, affirming your position, can Mr. Levesey ever come back? Is he permanently precluded from going into the taxi business or driving a cab from now on? I mean, is this a don't come back situation?
There's definitely a certain amount of time that needs to transpire to show and demonstrate a certain change in that behavior, and based on, usually when asked, my understanding that the police might be the best to respond to this, is they look at a number of different factors, weighing all of them.
Okay.
Not just necessarily one thing or nothing.
So it's just situation, he could come back in a year and see what the situation looks like at that time, or?
Might be able to, typically, depending on the type of crimes, it might be five years they would want to wait.
Yeah.
Other crimes that, against people, that are different.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To follow up on Counselor Bennett's questioning, there's nothing to prevent Mr. Levesey, I'm sorry if I'm not saying that correctly, there's nothing to prevent him from coming forward in a year from now, in terms of city codes or...
No.
Marion County regulations.
No, he can apply.
And just one last question, if I could, Mr. Starkey, the, this whole issue before us was based upon a complaint?
Yes.
From a citizen saying an unlicensed driver is, unpermitted taxi driver is operating a taxi cab?
Yes, it was after the complaint and my conversation with him that he filed his application.
Okay, thank you.
Other councilors, are there any further questions? All right, thank you. We'll now have rebuttal, so if the applicant or his lawyer would care to have rebuttal, it's seven minutes' time.
A couple of quick points, I'll let Mr. Levesey speak for the majority of the rebuttal time. The issue with the parole violation was a technical issue that got resolved, confusion about the reporting requirements. That's the reason that Mr. Levesey is here tonight and not in prison for, because that was explained to the court, and he was given a minor fine rather than actually put in jail once the issue was resolved. The issue with the scenario that Mr. Starkey proposed with having a minor who's parent or guardian or someone like that came to pick up the minor, or excuse me, arranged the minor to be picked up. Ken has come up with a plan for addressing that scenario. He has an arrangement with two other companies to address any time that there's a minor to be picked up. Again, if he comes into contact with minors, that's a lot more serious issue for him than this business license because there's a real possibility that he could end up going to The materials that were submitted on behalf of Ken were not meant to imply that Marion County had endorsed him in any way. The point is that he has run this by the people who are in charge of making sure that because of his past conduct or his past convictions, that he is not a risk to the community. He's run that by them, and they developed that safety plan, that's the point for including it. It's not, you know, trying to use Marion County as an official recommender of Ken. And then finally, the issue on whether we could just wait longer. The downside to that, obviously, is you have another investor, you have significant money that's been poured into this company to offer a taxi company that's going to be one of the superior companies in Salem, and a lot of that goes out the window if you're passing more time. There's bills that are accruing, but there's, there can be no fares in the city of Salem at this point. So I'll let Ken address some other points as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to address, the question was posed to Mr. Starkey in regards to what is required to apply for licensing, and it's more than just a background check. I was required to, of course, have a vehicle, to have the vehicle letter to specific... I was required to, of course, have a vehicle, to have the vehicle lettered to specific sizes. The company name had to be six inches, phone number listed there, and, and the, the prices that would be charged for, for a cab ride, the fares, had to be at least two inches tall. The cab had to be lighted, and it had to have a meter, and it also had to have the special taxi insurance, which is double, basically double normal liability insurance. So applying for licensing, for applying for the agency license in Salem is not just simply filling out an application. There are many steps involved before you can even fill out the application. It took us four months in order to fulfill all these requirements. And thus where the expense was accrued, $15,000 by the time we bought the vehicle, lettered it, metered it, and lighted it, and insured it. So this is not something a person can just, you can't just have a car and fill out an application for the agency license. You have to fulfill many requirements first. So I just wanted to, to make sure that that question was properly addressed, because I don't feel like it was completely answered earlier. Okay?
Okay. And I believe Counselor Bennett, you had a question for Mr.?
Either Mr. Rice or?
Okay.
Or Mr. Levesey. Did I understand that you are currently driving out, providing service outside the city of Salem in Marion County? Or are you in state and licensed there, or what?
Right now, Mr. Starkey told me on our phone conversation that if I was caught driving a passenger around, I could be fined up to $150. From that day till today, I have ceased driving anyone around.
But you were driving in people, people inside the city and outside the city, pretty much?
Predominantly outside of the city.
But inside the city and outside?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you.
But I haven't since I was asked not to.
Okay.
Okay. Other counselors' questions? Counselor Dickey, followed by Counselor Benars, and Counselor Nanki.
All right. Thanks. This may have been covered, so I apologize if it kind of got lost in the details. So your probation and the no contact with minors, how long does that last for you? Is that forever and everything, or is there a time limit on that?
Well, I'm on probation for five years. And that is the provisions of the, not probation, that is for five years.
And then it goes away after that?
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Benars?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had two questions. One, you had mentioned about the camera on the dashboard. I wondered if it also, it obviously records video, but does it record sound?
Yes. Audio and, and video. And it is also swivelled for, if I have something that I need to do outside of the cab, I can pivot it around too.
Is there any mic on the outside of the car so that, where you can't see with the camera, was the question?
Yeah. There is no out, there is no exterior microphone. It's all interior. And it's night vision, too. So even if the lights are not on in the cab, it still videotapes everything in the cab.
Okay. And the second one that I wanted was just, if you could give me a light history of your employment, I noticed that you had been driving cab for a couple of years prior to 2011.
Yes.
What did you do prior to that, then?
Well, prior to that, I was a stay-at-home dad. I did that for 10 years. And before that, I was in children's ministry for 20 years. Licensed minister, I graduated from Salem Bible College. I worked as associate pastor at Christian Life Center. Prior to that, I was a finisher.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Levesey, for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Being able to tell the difference between a minor and a non-minor, if the question comes up, how would you deal with that?
Honestly, if I had doubt, I would call one of my other partner cab companies and have them take care of it. In the two years prior to this, I drove cab, I had someone, you know, a child in my cab, maybe twice. It's not normal for teenagers to call for a taxi. Most of the people that I pick up would be at nighttime, and the bulk of those are from bars. And I would hope that minors aren't coming out of bars.
And a question on that, thank you. In regards to entering a, a bar?
Yes.
You have a waiver in your probation to do that, or you're requesting it?
No. I have a safety plan in effect, signed by my probation officer and by my, my therapist, that says that I can enter into a bar to pick up a customer or to solicit business from the bartender or manager. I have a timeframe put on that. If I go in to pick up a passenger, I'm only allowed to be in that establishment for five minutes. If it's a sales call, if you will, I'm allowed 15 minutes.
Okay. Two other real quick ones.
Sure.
Camera?
Yes.
Something that lets passengers know? I don't know. It's not standard practice, I'm assuming, to have a?
Correct.
Camera in a taxi cab. And maybe some people don't want to be on camera.
Right. And it is posted on, on the dashboard, my camera, in very large letters, that we are under, you will be photographed, is what the, the sign says.
Okay. And then finally, to follow up to Counselor Bennett's question in regards to licensing to drive outside of the city, you have a license?
I have?
From some entity?
From, from the state. I have an LLC. I have a registered business with the state of Oregon.
But, but is, yeah, that?
There, there's no other licensing agency that I'm aware of, other than, like, you know, the city of Salem has a licensing requirement to drive cab in Salem. But I'm not aware of any other in the area. Of course, you know, Portland has that, you know, major metropolitan cities, but to, to my knowledge, no one else does.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Yes. Mr. Levesey, the, the safety plan is dated June 5th of this year. And you applied formally for the vehicle-for-hire license on August 27th.
Yes.
You were, were you knowingly operating without, I realize there's ramp-up time investment to get the vehicle ready and to get ready, but were you knowingly operating, and are you still knowingly operating, a taxi cab, knowing that you, the intent of the regulation, I'm not sure it was clear to you, but you were sort of getting ready and driving a cab at the same time you were getting ready?
Right. I was not aware of the requirement for the agency license. I, what I was thinking, that you had to register with the city of Salem to have a business in, in the city of Salem. I did not understand about the agency license. I was aware of the requirement for the hack license. At the time that I had the safety plan installed, I was not picking up anybody yet. I was still in the process of getting everything ready. And I, I admit to having picked up people, but part of that was to, to prove that this was a viable business, to prove to my investor that, that I was worth the risk.
Sure.
That this is something that I could and would do. Predominantly, my customers were outside of the city. And, and although, since my conversation with Mr. Starkey, I have ceased any and all business activity, except for to continue to ask my investor to continue to pay bills.
Sure. You had previously held a vehicle-for-hire license and worked for a affordable cab?
Yes.
So what was that work history like?
Well?
How many years were you driving cab?
I drove for two years.
Okay.
For them.
And during that time, you were not aware that you needed to have a vehicle-for-hire license?
I knew I had to have a driver-for-hire license.
Okay.
But I was not, because that was something that the company had to have. And, you know, that's one of the things I'm not quite understanding, because I asked for, you know, I, I didn't realize that the licensing had to be specific to me. I figured it would be specific to the company itself, if you understand what I'm saying there.
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. All right. I'll now close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation to deny the vehicle-for-hire license.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move the staff recommendation to deny the vehicle hire license. Is there discussion? We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Will the nays please raise your hand so the recorder can record Counselors Clem, Counselor Benars, and Counselor Thomas? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Our second public hearing. Will the recorder please introduce that?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding denial of vehicle-for-hire agency license for Ken Levesey. Criteria for review of the vehicle-for-hire license at issue are established in former Salem Vice Code, chapters 30 and 34, which were in effect at the time of the application.
Thank you. And yes, we have a staff report?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff Starkey, Management Analyst II with Building and Safety Division. The subject of the hearing is denial of a license for hire agency. Issue, should the city council deny the vehicle-for-hire agency license application for Ken Levesey? Staff recommends that the city council deny the vehicle-for-hire agency license application for Mr. Levesey. Now, I could repeat much of the same information, and I'm happy to do that. However, I can just inform you that the summary, background, facts, and findings are very much similar. And there's only a couple other points that I would add or, or want to share with you. What would be your preference, Madam Mayor?
I think preference would probably be that you discuss those other additional points that you wanted to add, and will rely upon what you had presented just previously.
Okay.
And as well as the written documents.
Okay.
Thanks.
What is different in this case is we feel the greater level of responsibility for a licensed operator, because they're not only responsible for themselves, but also to ensure that their employees are complying with all the laws and ordinances as well. And again, the pattern that's been demonstrated presents a reasonable doubt in our minds about his ability to perform those licensed functions. I'd also like Sergeant Welsh to come forward and speak to the operating or safety plan that was submitted. He has some additional information about that that might be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. And is that part of the timing for the staff presentation? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi. Sergeant Jim Welsh, Salem Police Department, Crime Prevention Unit. The only thing that I would add, that I've heard discussed about the safety plan, I spoke with Mr. Levesey's probation officer at length about this. This is, when you're on probation, there are certain jobs that they can prohibit automatically. If he was to apply to work at a daycare center, for example, that'd be, he couldn't do it. Something less obvious, they, they can't prohibit without real specific situations that they can articulate to tell them you can't do it. So instead, what they will do is put in a safety plan. So that was, that was the issue there. In discussing going into bars and contact with minors, the probation officer that he currently has said this will, in fact, violate his probation. So there was some kind of agreement before that. It's apparently not in place now. So if you have further questions about that?
I'm sorry, because I didn't quite hear what you said just at the end, but did you say that, that either of those conditions, if exercised, would violate his parole?
Correct. He has, he has violations that are listed in the terms of his probation. Those have not gone away. The safety plan does not override those conditions. So his probation officer said that those violations would be in effect if he had contact with minors or went into a liquor establishment.
I guess I fail to understand why the probation officers then would even have signed off on this safety plan.
That was our question, too.
Which I realize they're not under your jurisdiction or authority, but it seems like a clear conflict that they almost were assisting him with thinking that that might be appropriate.
Yeah. And I agree with you on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So what I'd like to also make clear is that the staff report, all the contents of the supplementary staff report are entered into the record, even though we did not discuss them.
Right.
And that would conclude the staff presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we have people signed up to testify? All right. Thank you. Okay. The applicant is signed up to testify. Would you like to come forward? Excuse me. And you'll have, excuse me, as before, 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Pearson. I won't add much more than what's already been discussed. I do want to point out that the issue with an agency license versus a personal license for Mr. Levesey to drive a cab are two separate issues. This is a separate LLC that's been set up by two co-owners. So basically, the issue is whether there's anything in what you've heard about Ken that says he cannot even be involved in the operation of a business. And that's really the issue here. So to the extent that we can separate out those two issues, whether you think he can safely drive a cab has already been decided, or whether you have doubts about that, this, this discussion is really, can he be involved at all in the operation of a business? And I, I think that, given the people who are, who are here to testify to his integrity, there's, you know, no allegation of embezzlement or something like that that would raise concerns about his business ethics. That's the, that's the only point I would offer.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I have much more to add to that. I, I do appreciate the time that you've given to this matter, or to the previous matter of, of the driver-for-hire license. My ability to own a cab company, I don't believe, or a company period in town, I feel like, feel like this comes to the point of whether I'm allowed to, to own a company at all. Be given my past. As a company owner, I wouldn't have contact with, with the passengers. I would have contact with whoever drove for my company. I, I did not know what the officer had brought up in regards to the safety plan. I, my understanding was if there's a safety plan in effect, it gives you a certain latitude in, in dealing with certain matters. It's just like, he pointed out that, or he said that, you know, any contact with minors, I have a safety plan in effect with my probation officer, and I have, from the beginning, to be able to have contact with my nephews and nieces that come over for the holidays. They're aware of that, and it's never been considered as a violation. So I'm not quite understanding, and believe me, I will find out more about this, how they can give me permission to do this, to go into the, you know, bars or whatever, to talk, you know, to make sales calls, and then have them turn around and deny me that. I'm not, I'm not understanding, because I've never been notified of this. So, but nonetheless, I, I don't believe that any of my past shows that I would have an inability to run a company. I have, I have no question on identity theft, embezzlement. When I was a, for 20 years at the church, I served on the church board. Man, I took care of the church's finances, paid the church's bills, counted the church's money. I, over the years, I, I have no kind of fraud or financial crimes against me, nor ever any accusations against me. So I'm just trying to plead with you to let you know that my integrity as a businessperson would be as high as, as I said, as a cab driver. If I take on a debt, I pay the debt. If I, you know, have people working for me, I'm going to make sure that they're, that they make a living wage. That, I've always said, as, as an employee, it would shame me as an employer to know I've always said, as an employee, it would shame me, as an employer, to know that one of my employees has to draw food stamps. It would be my intention and my goal, if I had someone driving for me, that they would make a living wage, that they would not be dependent upon the government, that they would be dependent on their ability to perform the task at hand. Thank you.
Okay. All right, also signed up to testify, oh, I'm sorry, there are questions. Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thanks, and thank you for kind of elaborating about your participation and ownership of the company. I do have a question. If you have drivers that are employed by you, and a driver has an issue, and they have to, I don't know, they're somewhere, they fall ill or something like that, you as the owner, would you ever have to go out and take over for them, or something like that, if there was an issue that came up with one of your drivers or their vehicle?
No, I would not. I have already had, I already have a gentleman's agreement with Magic Cab and with Around Town Taxi to take care of any overflow that I have, and the agreement was also that I would take care of any overflow that they had. So if my vehicle was broke down, had a sick driver unable to take care of that, the driver would take care of my customer.
So, to follow up, so if you had a driver, just as an example, that was maybe in the middle of doing a run or going to do a pickup and fell ill, someone needed to come and get their car, you, one of those other companies would still come and do the transportation piece of that?
Yes, yes, they would. The owners of those two companies are drivers that I used to drive with when I worked for Affordable. These are people that I had a gentleman's agreement with back when I drove cab as coworkers, and we've carried that agreement on as businesspersons.
Are there other questions? I have a, Counselor Nanki, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the current partnership agreement?
Yes.
I'm assuming the way it's set out, that one's an investor and the other's kind of owner-operator, and it was the intent for you to actually drive?
Yes.
What is a single vehicle?
Yes.
That it's owned right now?
Right.
Business plan was to add additional vehicles over time, or?
Yes, yeah, but business plan honestly has become the largest cab company in Oregon. My intention is to be a real company, not just a one-man operation.
So how will the previous decision affect your ongoing operation if the agency license is granted then?
Without myself being able to drive the cab here in town, what it would mean is I have to find somebody that would be willing to commit to a company that is starting at ground zero, and be willing to put in the time to set down an Amtrak and Greyhound, wait for someone to come up, leave the cab, waiting for somebody to actually call, you know, it's just beginning at the very bottom, and then working their way up. Every cab driver out there is aware of the fact that there's going to be times when the phone does not ring, and you have to go out and find someone to ride your cab. I don't see any reason why, as a cab owner, I wouldn't be able to go around and talk to the people at the hotels and solicit their businesses, as long as I'm not driving passengers around. And that was part, that was our contingency plan. If I was not able to obtain a hack license, a driver-for-hire license, then I would become the sales rep, that I would be, you know, a manager versus a driver.
Thank you.
I have a question that has to do with something that you wrote on the Activity Safety Plan?
Yes.
Which listed that in 1982, apparently you were convicted of armed robbery. Can you tell us a little about that, please?
Well, I was a young naive teenager that was, that, I didn't understand the severity of the situation I was getting into, and I robbed a gas station with a friend, and have taken great strides since then to overcome that conviction. If you'll notice there, that there's nothing listed from that time until the recent allegation. And I absolutely transformed my life from when I got in trouble for that. I became an associate pastor, I started as a Sunday school teacher, children's church teacher, men's group leader, deacon of the church, board member, associate pastor and counselor. So it was a serious mistake made in my youth.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Benars?
Thank you. Could you answer, I'm going to ask you a few questions, just four questions, actually. And I'm looking at right now a letter from the Marion County Sheriff's Office in reference to your parole. If you're allowed to operate a business, you're obviously not at this point going to have a license to drive a taxi cab.
Right.
But if you're allowed to participate in the business, are you going to be able to submit to a sex offender monthly report before the 10th of each month and still operate your company?
Absolutely.
Are you going to be able to pay your supervision fees and board or court ordered fines?
Absolutely.
Are you going to report any contact with law enforcement?
Yes.
And those will all happen, and you can still operate your business. Will you be required to continue taking polygraph tests every six months, or as required?
Yes, it will be.
So all those, all those conditions can be met, still operating the company, not driving a taxi cab?
As far as the treatment is concerned, I've only had two visits left, because I go once a month, I'm in what's called aftercare, and that ends in December. The polygraph will continue biannually until the end of probation. And so, even if it was, even if it interfered with the business, that would be a priority, because that's what keeps me from being in trouble.
I always have a plan B in my pocket, but, so what is your plan B if you don't get the license for either the taxi or the business?
Then I operate outside of Salem. It would be harder road to hoe, but, you know, I just won't pick up people in Salem.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions by counselors? Thank you very much. All right, we'll proceed with the testimony of people who've signed up. Ora Cousy, followed by Jeannie Walker.
Do I need to restate my name and address?
Yes, through the record, thank you.
Ora Cousy, 736 Baldwin Road, Camas Valley, Oregon. I guess I'm standing before you for the next part. Five of you have felt that he's a threat to society, which it was even sent that he wasn't likely to reoffend in a letter that both Mr. Starkey mentioned and his attorney mentioned. And so, in a business, he won't have to deal with or be in the position where you guys would feel he's a threat to society, and so I'm just asking you, based on those things, that you would at least let him have a business, as many people who have crimes against them do have businesses. So that's all I would say on his behalf.
Are there any questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much. Jeannie Walker, followed by Lisa Hendrick.
Hi again. I guess I would just ask that you?
Oh, excuse me, you need to state your name and address, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeannie Walker, 1408 Yolanda Avenue, Springfield, Oregon, 97477. Again, I am his partner, and I have invested quite a bit of money, just because of the process. Ken has some amazing ideas and high qualifications for whoever we can hire. They will have to be of the utmost character, and we'll have to envision our mission and our passions and our dreams. I just ask you to reconsider, like Ora said, there are many people who have criminal backgrounds, who also own companies or businesses. I ask that you not let his past define what he wants to do. We have made a backup plan to hire people. He would be the manager and not on the streets. I do, besides giving the money, I do all the bookwork. I don't have a desire to drive a cab, but I enjoy the other stuff, so I just ask that you give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question in regards to, you have previous experience in the cab business, per se?
None whatsoever.
Bookkeeping?
But I do, I work for a tax firm in Eugene, and I have about 15 years of bookkeeping experience.
Okay.
But?
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
I'm learning a lot.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Your Mayor. My name is Lisa Hendrick. My address is 6227 Arbordale Drive, Southeast in Salem. I need to challenge Mr. Starkey. As a past owner of Affordable Taxi, I myself have filed complaints for drivers who were contracted under us with Affordable Taxi. Merlin Davis, the owner of Magic Cab, we had turned in for having possession on him marijuana, also trading drugs for taxi rides, as well as sex favors from strippers. Nothing was done, so we dismissed Merlin Davis from Affordable Taxi. We did make complaints, official complaints, with the City of Salem Permit Office, and yet, he's allowed to have a taxi cab company and drive. Michael, who is the owner of Around Town Taxi, is another offender. Michael had kidnapped a dancer and was taking her the wrong direction. She had requested Michael to go a different way. He said, "You can't blank, 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 tell me which way to go." She called me on her cellphone and said, "This was going on." I said, "Pull over right now, or we're going to call the police." We did in fact let Michael go. We did in fact file kidnapping charges with the Salem Police, and nothing had happened. Michael is currently the owner of Around Town Taxi, and he is a driver. Rick Mitchell, who is the owner of Value Taxi, drove that taxi without a license for a business. He only had a hack license, and yet he was allowed to be the owner of Value Taxi, and he still is the owner of Value Taxi. So I would challenge Mr. Starkey in singling out Ken Levesey and why, when he did nothing, or whoever was in charge at the time, for these other three businesses who still exist, and these three gentlemen who still seem to drive and own these companies. To clear up the permits, you can pick up in Mount Angel, Almsville, and drop off within the city limits. If you stay and the person pays wait time, you are legal to pick up that person and take them back from whence they came. In the city of Woodburn, you do need a license to drive within the city of Woodburn. If I were to obtain that city, that license within the city of Woodburn, which our company did have a license in the city of Woodburn, I am free to drop off that person in Salem. If I stay in Salem, the person pays me wait time. I can wait for that person and take them back to Woodburn with no problems. My question to Mr. Starkey is, was Ken dropping off people within the city of Salem, and where did they come from? And most importantly, where's the complainant? Thank you.
Are there any questions by counselors? Okay, thank you very much. And Paul Frederickson?
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Paul Frederickson. I live at 1289 Resil Road, Southeast in Salem, Oregon. I guess I wanted to just add from previous testimony regarding Ken as a licensed cab driver, and the applicability where this is something that he is an owner and would not be operating the cab as part of that business. This is really saying, hey, you know, we've invested, you've heard that, that they've invested quite a bit to even get this off the ground, and now we're taking a small business off the street by this, agreeing to this denial, and they've invested a lot of heart, a lot of money, and a lot of effort. And I feel that, you know, you've already said he cannot drive, probably at least for the five years of the probation, that you consider granting, or granting the company to operate in the city of Salem, and following, if you're setting down even guidelines for what, that he is not going to be able to drive, we understand that. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much. We now have the opportunity for rebuttal. Oh, I'm sorry, questions of staff first, sorry. Okay, Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure who the most appropriate is, but Mr. Starkey, the, did we request that the PO clarify statements, this safety plan? Is it appropriate to have the parole officer here to help explain some of these safety plan ideas? Have we ever done that before?
Not to my knowledge, we have not.
Okay. Maybe ought to be something we want to think about, but, my last question is, I'm reading the SRC 30.010, talks about unlawful for a person who's running a company to allow that company to operate without a license. Is that generally for all companies, or just for taxi cab firms?
This former Chapter 30 is all licensed generally, businesses and vocations.
Okay, so, the, Mr. Levesey was, in fact, operating a cab without a license as a driver, and he was also operating a company without a license. Is that what the staff report shows?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for Mr. Starkey, if I may?
Yes.
How do we not know what the requirements around us are in Marion County, as far as whether or not drivers would need to be licensed or not to operate? And maybe staff in general, it sounds like there's some other cities, is, do we not know if it's, you know, countywide, statewide? Does anybody know what the requirements are outside of our jurisdiction? Because I have heard that if someone picks someone up, brings them into Salem, pays wait time, and leaves, then that is a valid transaction that takes place, and we have no jurisdiction in that. Is that correct?
Periodically, based on specific situations, there will be some research done, but I wouldn't be in a position to speak in a detailed way about how other agencies function. With regard to people coming into Salem, or picking somebody up and dropping them off somewhere else, my understanding of the code is if they're doing business in the city of Salem, they're required to be licensed. So, they have a fair in state, and they come in doing business, the taxi business, in city of Salem, they're required to be licensed here.
Yeah, because something from the past, we haven't done many of these, but I know there's been some in the past, and that rang a bell.
If I may?
Yes.
The language of the code is relatively clear, at least the former code, and it basically says any person to engage in, engage in or conduct any business or vocation for which a license is required, that's the, when a license is required, if you're doing those activities. So, the business is the operation, but the vocation is the driver. So whether you're operating a business within the city limits- So, whether you're operating a business within the city limits or you're driving a taxi cab within the city limits, a license would be required.
Question in that regard, if the permit were to be issued or the license for the agency, Mr. Levesey could still drive said cab outside of the municipal boundaries of the city of Salem and maneuver passengers around. If there wasn't a fair in that and the business was located in Salem, could he actually be inside of that taxi as it was moving through town? Or would that be considered an operator?
So, what you're saying is if he had a operator's license from the city, but only carried passengers outside the city limits? Conceivably, yes. I mean, if he, we could, if he qualified for an operator's license and had someone else driving the cab, or if he were to only transport passengers outside the city limits, then conceivably, yes.
But if he was in the cab, inside of the city of Salem, would that be a violation? He could be driving off to state and to pick somebody up, but that, to me, that would be part of that call, so he would be operating inside the city. But it gets real weird.
I don't believe we know the answer to that question unless one of the sergeant or... Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, are there any further questions of staff? All right, we'll now move to rebuttal.
Thank you, Daniel Rice, Ward 4. A quick point in relation to the most recent discussion. Ken, if the agency license is granted, does not have plans to drive someone within the city. Whether, you know, that person's picked up and brought into the city, he doesn't plan to try to do that. And again, I think most of the points that were raised, to the extent they raised a reasonable doubt about whether Ken should be licensed, it goes more to his driver's license versus the agency license being involved in the operation of the business. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now close the hearing and have deliberation. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation that the City Council deny the vehicle-for-hire-agency license application by Ken Levesey.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanke to move the staff recommendation, which would be to deny the vehicle-for-hire-agency license. Counselor Bennett, do you have? Counselor Nanke, did you want to discuss? Counselor Tesler, all right.
I'll take just a second, Madam Mayor. I think when you take a look at the record here and read it with any kind of diligence, understanding that we are, we don't license a lot of businesses in this town. It is a, the Salem seal of approval that you are absolutely safe when you climb into that vehicle. We've heard a lot, we've heard a number of these over the past several years and in each case, I believe the staff has come to us very carefully considering the recommendation that has the impact we've heard described tonight in terms of this gentleman's both personal and professional situation. But I think when you go through the kinds of questions of record, of honesty, of the ability to, particularly where we see felons come in on these kinds of jobs, their willingness to face up to what's happened, the willingness to be absolutely truthful. And I found that missing in this application. And I think that that's the kind of thing we look for in these kinds of licensing situations, along with a whole batch of detailed information that goes on inside this that is just very, very troubling. So, that's why you get my motion.
All right, further discussion? Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I cannot support staff on this particular subject. This case, to me, engenders an even deeper discussion of how persons with a record will ever be able to re-enter society. However, tonight is not the forum for that. What I will say is that having been related to someone who also did something stupid when they were young, who now cannot find any type of reputable employment because of a past record, even though the offense happened over 10 years ago, and they felt that their debt to society had been paid. Witnessing their struggle has left me with the observation that a past criminal record is an eternal debt to society that apparently never will be paid. I would ask how we will ever break this vicious cycle of reoffense if we do not encourage those with past records to re-enter society in some shape or form. Therefore, I will not be supporting this motion and I feel by removing this person as a driver removes the possible inherent risk, but ruining them as an operator seems overly punitive.
Thank you. Other comments by councilors? All right, there is a motion on the floor and the motion was made by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanke to affirm the staff recommendation to deny the vehicle-for-hire agency license. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in, all those against the motion signify by saying no.
No.
No. All right, I think the noes have it. And for the record... I'm sorry, for the, for the record, for the city recorder to record the no votes, raise your hand so we know for sure. All right. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move we continue this public hearing and request that staff bring in this probation officer that there seemed to be a lot of questions about, that I thought circled around his testimony. We've not heard from this person and I'd like to hear kind of what's going on here.
All right. Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
All right, it's been, is there a second? All right, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Nanke to direct staff to contact and bring, to continue the hearing and to ask staff to contact the parole officer and bring that person to the testimony for the following public hearing. And for discussion, Counselor Bennett?
No, I've had enough to say.
Okay. Counselor Nanke?
Thank you, Madam.
And then Counselor Clem?
And we can contact them, we can't compel them to present material, to my knowledge. Do we know if parole and probation typically provide testimony to jurisdictions outside of their own?
Mr. Starkey?
We're not aware that they do, but we can certainly contact them and see if we can make arrangements to do so. Willing to do that.
It'd be weird to continue a public hearing for someone else to be present and then have them just say no. I suppose we could just open it and remotion and close it then, I suppose.
Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Substitute motion moved that the City Council approve the vehicle-for-hire-agency license application for Ken Levesey.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move that the, I'm sorry, Counselor Clem, would you repeat your motion, please?
Sure. That council approve the application for vehicle-for-licence, vehicle-for-hire-agency license for Ken Levesey.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish that solely that the matter of the parole officer's representations were directly and primarily linked to this decision that council has to make.
Right.
But I feel compelled to believe that they were really linked to the driver's license, not the ability to operate a business. And I believe that, given the strong representation from people who can speak to maybe not necessarily the past history that Mr. Levesey has had, but maybe to the present and the future, I think he, he should be allowed to operate a business in the city of Salem. I wish there were a way of putting conditions on it, like, you know, report to, that staff would receive a parole officer report in six months to confirm that the business is operating appropriately. I'm not altogether too convinced that that would help make me feel any better. I'm willing to take a risk here. I'm concerned that we don't walk away from tonight believing that other cab companies aren't providing reputable service either. The issue at fact here is, should Mr. Levesey be able to operate this business? And I think council should approve that.
All right. There's a motion, yes, Counselor Nanke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this agency license specific to Mr. Levesey or is it to the LLC?
Is that a question for staff?
For staff, yes.
Okay.
If issued, the license will have two partners listed, both of them. At this point, it's just Mrs. Walker.
So, currently, the application has both business owners' names?
No, just the one. That was the only one that was approved.
Okay, the other was already approved, this would be to add?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and the motion was by, made by, thank you, Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Nanke to approve the application for vehicle license. Was it Bednarz? All right, thank you. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion to grant the application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. I think we'll take just a moment's recess and let everybody kind of readjust and stretch. Is Counselor Clem in the room? Oh, all right, just a moment, please. We're just gonna wait a moment and Counselor Clem will be right, right back.
that are existing businesses to do new things. By way of background, we began with a joint planning commission and council work session in August 12th. Council put first reading on August 26th and referred the matter to Planning Commission for public hearing and consideration. That public hearing was held on October 1st. There were two members of the public who spoke, both members representing Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties, and both recommending that the planning commissioners return the ordinance to council recommending adoption. Council voted... or sorry, Planning Commission voted unanimously to do that. Public notice was provided. This is what we provided for the Planning Commission. Both required public notices, and the Statesman Journal ran an article on that day that included notice to public that there was a public hearing being held that night. For tonight's public hearing, again, we provided public notice October 14, and also 21st and 28th in the Statesman Journal. And just this morning, in the front page of Mid Valley, Statesman Journal again ran an article on this. I will note that if I were making the headline, I would not have called it "fees." They did say... Statesman did provide the time and location. I would have not have said "fees." It gets better. That's how I've done it. They did change it. Public Works staff contacted the Statesman Journal, and they changed the online version right away, which does say "hearing set on stormwater codes." But that's... anyway. Now, I'll talk briefly about the changes that we've had. We continue working not only with the Stormwater Advisory Committee, but with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and some other stakeholders, and of course, internal staff, legal, public works on the code after you saw it in August 26th. We revised the definition from maximum extent feasible, and now makes better grammatical sense. The meaning hasn't changed, but it's much better worded. We clarified implementation requirements. These are mirrored... these requirements in the code are based on what is Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter 92, which talks about vested property rights and when the local ordinance take effect or apply to a project. And we discovered since August 26th that it's better to incorporate those for implementation purposes in the local ordinance, and that's what we did. Also, we made conducting capacity analysis. This is a project to evaluate the downstream capacity of the conveyance system. It had been mandatory, and now we put it as a discretion in Public Works Director. Couple of minor changes, wording for sizing to reflect the actual way we do the modeling, hydrologic and hydraulic modeling. And we're repealing SRC Chapter 70, subsection 115. That's a threshold that will go away when this new code comes effective. And then, something I forgot to do in the earliest version, we established its effective date, January 1, 2014, and that complies with the permit. Just briefly, I'll talk about how this code complies with the state requirements and the requirements of our municipal stormwater permit. The permit says you need to reduce pollutant... stormwater pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. In our proposed code, among the things we do is we're very clear about what pollutants are allowed and what pollutants are not allowed to go... and what things are not allowed, rather, to go into our municipal storm sewer system. We also make it a requirement to identify and eliminate illicit connections. That's where, for example, wastewater is being directed into the stormwater system. It's required to report discharge of pollutants, and also, we've incorporated requirements for source controls. Many of these things we've been doing already, it's just now we have clearly incorporated into a code that, well, is codified and is more clear. The permit has specific requirements for post-construction site runoff. Again, this is for new development. You create impervious surface areas or redevelopment, you're replacing impervious surface areas. The permit establishes a threshold for single-family residential projects at 1,300 square feet. That is incorporated in this code. Similarly, requirements for non-single-family projects of 10,000 square feet, we incorporated that also into our code. The post-construction runoff requirements require flow control and treatment. The intent is you mimic the natural hydrologic functions, a lot of words, basically infiltration, plants, if applicable, transpiration, to the maximum extent feasible. We've also incorporated into the code practices we currently do, authority for the director, among other things, to require practices, to require additional practices if not doing so would result in a violation of our permit. And then, we have a fee in loop construction... a fee in loop provision in this code. A lot of public outreach. I've been out with the neighborhoods, generally favorable, and also met with the chamber and of course, working with the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties. Our staff recommendation is after the public hearing that council amend ordinance bill 2813 into engrossed ordinance bill 2813, and then move it into second reading. And that, subject to your questions, concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have people signed up for testimony? Do we have a neighborhood association represented? I don't see that, but I have a name, Mike Erdman. We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate you waiting through the other hearings.
Thank you. It was a little stiff, though, getting out of that chair after a couple hours.
I'm sure.
Mike Erdman with the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties, 385 Taylor Street Northeast, here in Salem, and in, I guess, the unique position of being down here and telling you that we don't like what this ordinance does, but we encourage you to adopt it. And so, we'll kind of explain why that is. The reason that we're very concerned about the ordinance is frankly, it's going to increase the cost of developing and building, and probably upwards of $3,000 a home. And so, you look at what the ordinance does, and essentially, your subdivisions are going to look quite different in the future. You'll see bio swells that are at the front of the lots that take the water as it drains off of the street, through cuts in the curb, back into that bio swell with the vegetation that'll treat the water, hold it back. The challenge, though, is of course, those bio swells have to be built during the development process before the homes go in. And so, that complicates things in a number of degrees. Obviously, there's a lot of cost that goes with that. It complicates it for the builder, because now your driveway locations have been predetermined. The builder can't buy a lot, or the homeowner can't select what the orientation of that house is going to be. And if they want, let's say, a pad, an RV pad for RV or boat or something like that, you may have to ship the house over, or your driveway location's already predetermined. And so, you've got to angle that driveway in, and so, you've got the aesthetics that we're concerned about. So, you know, there's a lot of complications that we have, but at the same time, you know, we understand that what you're dealing with here is state and federal requirements, and you have to do it. And so, our goal for the process has been to work with the city and try to develop an ordinance that we think helps you comply. You know, we minimize the impact on the cost of housing, realizing that we can't eliminate the impact of the cost, and to make the rules such that the industry can understand them, consumers can understand them. And I think what we've got is an ordinance that does that. You know, if you had asked us at the beginning of this process with the early drafts, could we support it? I would have said, no, we couldn't. But I think we spent a lot of time working with the committee and with staff, and I think you've got a... I think you've got an ordinance that we can support. You know, one of our primary goals has been ensuring that treatment is done at the development level, not on the individual lot. There's a lot of reasons for that. It's a lot less expensive. If you can take that bio swell that's got to be put in anyways for the street, maybe oversize it a little bit, so you take the rainwater right off the roof and treat it there. And so, that's important. I think the city, the community, gets a better result as well, because when you do that treatment there at the front of the lot, you've got something the city has control over. If you took the alternate path of doing a planter box or a filtration process there on the lot, inevitably, you'll get homeowners that five years down the road think, hey, let's take those plants out, because I'd much rather put vegetables in there. And the city loses the ability to make sure that water's treated. So, I think, you know, long and short of it is, we've got a process here that I think is as workable as we might hope for. We don't like the requirements. They are going to increase the cost of housing, there's no doubt about that, but at the same time, we know you've got to do it, and so, we'd encourage you to pass the ordinance.
Thank you. Perfect timing. We really appreciate your service on that committee and all of the service that you provide to the city and to the community. And I wonder if there are any questions of counselors at this point? Counselor Tesler.
Not really a question, but, you know, Mike, you know, like we said earlier, sometimes you just got to support things you don't like, sometimes. And I think you and Rick Massey are just hardcore guys who see the forest through the trees. So... and I want to commend you for that. But I also want to say to you that, yeah, it is going to cost the homeowner a little bit more, but... and I wish I had this study with me, but I was reading a study that basically said that people that invest upfront into stormwater in subdivisions and cities and things like that, you lessen flooding effects downstream. And we all pay for that. We all pay for the effects of huge floods. And so, the more that we can concentrate our efforts on reducing, you know, direct runoff, getting water to filtrate through the ground, and all of those things, we do reduce flooding downstream, which affects a wide spectrum of people at that. And Salem has very low flood insurance risks, so the flood insurance is good here. So, we want to really work towards keeping that way. And then, the other side benefit is it benefits the environment, and we all pay into that too. So, I think it's... if you look at the benefits that come from it, I think they would outweigh the cost over time. Although, as a homeowner, if somebody told me I had to pay... well, if somebody told me I had to pay $10,000 for something at my home the other day, which I won't go into, but if somebody told me I had to pay $3,000, yeah, I'd be pretty steamed. But, you know, I think overall, as a society, this is what we have to do as a society. But I still would like to commend you and Rick for standing up and coming forward and supporting something that you don't like, because it does affect your business, and I appreciate that greatly.
Other comments? Counselor Benars?
Thank you, Mike, for showing up tonight and talking about this important issue. Are you aware of any upcoming subdivisions that will have these bio swells, this... all this new stuff coming in, in the early 2014s, that we can... might go by and see what's happening as it's going in and as it's being developed?
Well, not right now, because the ordinance will only apply when application is made after January 1st. And so, typically, we don't know, you know, a subdivision's coming in. You know, the engineers know it, but we don't know it until after an application goes in. Kaiser has similar requirements, and so, there is a subdivision being built not too far from Kaiser Station right now. And I could get you the information, but if you wanted to go out there and kind of see how it lays out on the ground, you could actually see it with the development that actually is being constructed in Kaiser right now.
I know that we are, as we're... as an example, in West Salem, doing rebuilding Second Street, we're putting in bio swells. It was recommended that it was going to be in by the time we got... before we were finished with the project over there. So, there's an example there. But I'm curious to see how it actually pans out in a subdivision.
I think we're all looking forward to seeing how it looks.
I am too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to take this moment to thank and recognize Sharon Blasey, who also served on that task force. Appreciate your service and your bright mind as a member of that. I know certainly was a help, and much appreciated by staff and the other members. Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Yes, and I'm not sure it's required, but I do want to disclose that I worked for an employer who manufactures pervious concrete and was a member of the advisory committee here, but I don't believe that there's anything in this ordinance that would affect my ability to make an impartial decision, and not sure it's even required. But I want to make... be right up front that pervious concrete is obviously one of many, many different applications for... that may be considered for storm... just as it is now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Do we have questions for staff? I don't even see any hands raised, so we will not call staff back to the podium. They've got it right there. All right. Then I will close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the council advance engrossed ordinance bill number 28-13 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move to a second reading. I'm sorry. It was not you. All right. Counselor Clem.
It was the other one.
Thank you. All right. It's the other male voice on that side of the room. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oh, discussion?
Just a little team.
A little discussion? All right. Counselor Tesler?
I know. Everybody's tired. I just wanted to say that I really... Public Works staff on this one, especially this guy right there, Robert, he just went over and above. I mean, he just really did. And the guy is a physical... or no, he's an atomic engineer or something like that. And he comes up with this document that is easy to read, makes sense, doesn't look like in a nuclear spherical orbit or anything like that. And he worked with the committee, and it just... he did a really good job, and I just want to call him out for that, because this is hard work, doing this kind of work. This is not easy work. And I think it came off well, and I think it's a good product. It could use a little improvement, but I think we will get there over time. And so, I'm happy with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Benars?
I just wanted to say one thing to people who might see that we didn't ask questions and ask, oh, this is an important thing that's coming through the city council. And I just wanted to assure that we have had this conversation through numerous presentations, through neighborhood associations, through the neighborhood chair meeting, work session, countless conversations that has been going on now for six to nine months, I suspect. So, I'm just saying there's a lot going on underneath. It's like a duck and a pawn, a lot of movement of the feet, even though you don't see much on top.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to thank staff and the task force in regards to... you know, we hate mandates a lot of times, but I think they all did great work in trying to minimize the impacts on the community that, you know, were significant in opening up the window, per se, compared to some of the other jurisdictions, which is a good thing. And hopefully helps reduce that cost across the community. right up front that previous concrete is obviously one of many, many different applications for, that may be considered first, or just as it is now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Do we have questions for staff? I don't even see any hands raised, so we will not call staff back to the podium. They've got it right there. All right. Then I will close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the council advance engrossed ordinance bill number 28-13 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move to a second reading. I'm sorry.
Clem.
It was not you. All right, Counselor Clem.
It was the other one.
Thank you. All right. The other, the other male voice on that side of the room. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oh, discussion?
Just a little team.
A little discussion? All right. Counselor Tesler.
I know, everybody's tired. I just wanted to say that I, I really, Public Works staff on this one, especially this guy right there, Robert, he just went over and above. I mean, he just really did. And the guy is a physical, or no, he's an atomic engineer or something like that. And he comes up with this, this document that is easy to read, makes sense, doesn't look like in a nuclear spherical orbit or anything like that. And he worked with the committee, and it just, he did a really good job, and I just want to call him out for that, because this is hard work, doing this kind of work. This is not easy work. And I think it came off well, and I think it's a good product. It could use a little improvement, but I think we will get there over time. And so I'm happy with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Benars?
I just wanted to say one thing to, to people who might see that we didn't ask questions and ask, well, this is an important thing that's coming through the city council. And I just wanted to ensure that, that we've had this conversation through numerous presentations, through neighborhood associations, through the neighborhood chair meeting, work session, countless conversations that has been going on now for six to nine months, I suspect. So I'm just, I'm saying there's a lot going on underneath. It's like a duck and a pawn, a lot of movement of the feet, even though you don't see much on top.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to thank staff and the, the task force in regards to, you know, we hate mandates a lot of times, but I think they all did great work in trying to minimize the, the impacts on the community that, you know, were significant in opening up the window per se compared to some of the other jurisdictions, which is a good thing. And hopefully helps reduce that cost across the community without necessarily having major negative impacts on the, the environment. So, definitely thanks big time for that. And I didn't see anything on half-lifes. So, that's a good thing.
All right. Further comments? All right. Believe that we have a motion on the floor.
There is.
There is, yes. Thank you.
Seconded by.
Motion by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to advance the, to amend the ordinance bill 2813 and advance it to a second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. At our third, fourth hearing, would the recorder please introduce that one? No announcement from her. All right. We simply need a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the council deny order number 2013-05-VAR, I didn't realize how long this was going to go, -ACU, -SPR, which would effectively deny the cell tower at 1765 Center Street Northeast.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to deny the approval of the cell tower on the property at 1765 Center Street.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I spoke at length on this last time, so I won't do it again. I think the reasoning continues to be sound, so I'll just stick with it.
All right. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move a substitute motion for staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Clausen to move a substitute motion. Is there discussion? Counselor Clausen.
Yeah, I didn't get to ask staff this beforehand, but I was curious, I was, did we not make a decision at the last meeting on this that moved it out of the public hearing stage?
Yes. What you did is you, you adopted a motion to approve it, but our practice is to bring back a written order on land use decisions for you to adopt. So that's the motion, or that's, was the recommendation, is to adopt the written order.
Okay. I follow. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
And if I can just add it on top of that, that's why we have difficulties at times with ex parte contact, because we think we're done. And we're not, until we actually approve that order.
Okay. All right. Counselor Clem.
Given that, when does this finalize? Once this order has been approved? Or we have another 45 days and can't talk about it?
No. Once you adopt the written order, you're, you're done as far as the ex parte rules. The only exception to that would be if it is appealed to Luba, or it could potentially be back in your, your court if Luba were to remand it, and we would let you know that.
Thank you.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor, a substitute motion on the floor to approve, to approve the location of the cell tower.
To approve staff recommendation.
To approve staff recommendation regarding the cell tower. All right. All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Will the nays please raise their hand so the recorder can record the vote? All right. So the motion does pass. Thank you. Did you get those? Good. All right. We have no orders of special business, special orders of business, and we have no unfinished business. There is an information report in your binder, and we have no first readings. For ordinances, would the city reporter please read the title for the second reading?
Engrossed ordinance bill number 2813 relating to establishing a new chapter SRC, Chapter 71, stormwater, repealing SRC 70.115 and declaring an effective date. Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Pardon?
Yep.
Yes? Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That rotation just takes you by surprise, doesn't it?
And does she introduce this one?
With none except me.
Okay. And would the city reporter please introduce the next ordinance?
Ordinance bill number 3413 relating to the city's municipal storm sewer system permit, amending SRC 75.050, 75.060, 77.090, 78.030, 78.210, and 80.100, adding SRC 80.135, and repealing SRC 75.110 and 76.150.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have two people who've signed up under public comment, Ron Sturba and Carol Smith. So we'll start with Ron and then go to Carol.
Ron wants to talk about bioswells.
I'll keep it short to about three minutes.
Good action.
Good idea.
Is this like the X files?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and consellers and city staff. My address is 520th Street Northeast here in Salem in Ward 1 and Mr. Bennett's Ward, and I'm here on a safety item, and I think the whole city needs to be aware of the dangers of this and what this involves. And there's a lot of information, if you go to this website, and wish people would learn more about this, is very important for Salem in Oregon. I'm here to talk about my neighborhood going dark. And I thought, gosh, why is my whole neighborhood dark? Well, it turns out that the streetlights out in the front, which are round globe in a orange color, were changed out to LED, which is a light to, or a white to blue type lamp. And with that, it has a small footprint compared to the old lamp, street lamp. So my street's about 900 feet long. There's only two streetlights on the street. So consequently, when you turn off a center street, you look down my street, it's totally dark, you wouldn't even want to walk down there, you don't know what's going on. So, the effects of this type of lighting is why I'm here to discuss this. The city has adopted a light, and I'm going to go into the Kelvin range, and you're going to learn about this in, in lighting. At home, you're going to have a lighter or a warmer lamp, and that's going to be in about the 25 to 2800 Kelvin range, and the white lights are going to be 4,500 to 5,000. And that's what I was concerned about, was this white light. Well, I called, I sent a letter to the mayor, Consular Bennett, and Consular Tesler. I was referred to Public Works and asked Public Works to stop this project. Don't put the white lights in. It has health effects, it bothers wildlife, and, and also driving ability. So consequently, I called Public Works and they have no plan in place doing that, changeover. Turns out, it's PGE. So, what happens with the orange light, it, it does not reflect light when you're driving in the rain or the fog, but driving in, with your bright lights on in fog, it reflects, and that's what white light does. And they're taking this safety item away from the city of Salem, and I don't want that to happen. I would ask that the city stop PGE from putting these lights in until we can get the, the other type of lights put in, which are a lot safer for the drivers here in Salem. And I could go on a little bit more about it, but I wish you'd go to this website. It, you'll find communities all over Oregon, the city of Hillsboro, Bend have adopted light ordinances, and I think it's really refreshing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming to testify. Are there any questions from councillors? All right. Thanks very much. Carol Smith?
I wanted to submit a letter that...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I wanted to submit the letter that I sent to your office, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, as record.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Consellers. Carol Smith, Ward 1. Last week, I asked for an update on the parking enforcement downtown, and none is forthcoming. So I prepared my testimony as of 5:00 tonight with the information that I had. So I'm going to read it to you, and then we can deal with any discrepancies at the end of my testimony. When the city council adopted the no meters parking, no parking meters language on October 14th, by law, you had to adopt everything in the petition. The council pledged to do everything in our power to make this work. That's the pledge that we publicly made to 55 downtown businesses and the 9,000 people who signed the petition. As you know, part of the petition required that the city provide enforcement to prevent on-street parking spaces from being used illegally by downtown business owners, volunteers, jurors, students, and employees. I'm going to use the word employee tonight to mean all parties prohibited from parking on-street during the day. It appears there are no staff remaining in the city who remember how the free unlimited time parking program succeeded for 35 years. There was no reason to create a new program, especially since the downtown holiday shopping season is right around the corner. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the two stages that made our program successful in the past. Stage one was every six months, the city sent out a letter and a form for us to fill out, asking the businesses to list all of our employees' names. The city's, the city cross-referenced the employees' names with DMV records and created a list of all vehicles registered to that name. The names, the place of employment, and the license plate numbers were entered into the handheld devices used by the enforcement officers. There was a $250 fine for not providing this information when requested or providing false or misleading information to the city. Anyone who failed to comply received a reminder phone call. We had about 95% compliance. Since 2007, the city has sent out a letter requesting employees' names, but omitting any reference to a fine. Very low, very few businesses have complied. I think in the October meeting, they said something like 40 businesses complied. So that's the first part of, of enforcement. The second part is how it stands up in court. So there's certain things, certain levels that have to be met for that. There have to be signs posted in all vehicular entrances to the downtown warning employees that they've come into the district. Proof that the employers and employees have been told where it's legal and illegal for them to park. Proof that any employee issued $100 ticket has received a warning first. Employee warning tickets must contain a map of the district, clearly marking where the employees can and cannot park, the boundary of the district, and the information of where the employee can buy a parking pass. The employees must be ticketed in their place of work or be witnessed by an officer walking from their place of work to their vehicles. Officers cannot leave a ticket on the employee's windshield. I'm going to jump to the end, because I see I'm getting toward the end. The city council adopted the petition lock, stock, and barrel. Now you own it. If it fails, it's because you let it fail.